You know, Jack Butler always said. We related long.
Long way. Yeah.
He was in that game.
Well, we've got all the, like, all that stuff he did.
Yeah. Yeah, he said we were related. We were on the side and they just went on. We won't get into it.
Yeah, you're very diplomatic about it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sorry. Yep. Her grandpa was here.
True grandma.
She was on the tour.
She was last one.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock.
Scott.
Oh, yeah. With all the council members. Right?
Called him out, Ray. I wanted to make sure you.
Yeah. So I couldn't have. This word.
They sit down and call him. I can't stand back up. That's it. And that part.
He's supposed to be there.
Everybody. I was kidding. I'll do that if you want me.
Is that okay the way it's set out? So it's not what I want to hear.
All right, let's go ahead and call this common council regular session September two thousand twenty five. To order here, if y'all would please rise, touch the flag and say with me, the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. A true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Ms. Tucker, would we do a roll call?
There was some.
Present.
Board member Mayfield, present. Board member Sco, Brown.
Here.
Board member McLaughlin.
Here.
Everyone is witness.
Okay. On this next one, uh, item number four, there's going to be minutes from July. That is, you know, right here, I think everybody has reviewed them, but we need to pass those minutes. And then after that gets passed, if you pass it, we'll pass the minutes from last session. So I need a motion to accept the minutes from July. Last month, we didn't have a quorum.
Who was here?
Yeah. I move. And then everybody else, Scott was on one of us. This is July's. Was there a second to accept July's minutes?
Okay.
Councilwoman White, second step.
Want to do them both again?
Ah, I think you separate.
Vote separately. Okay. Okay. Mayor.
I don't.
I don't get the vote.
No.
Let's just.
This one.
This is the council.
Shoot. That's fine. Okay, uh, councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Hi.
Councilmember Brown.
Abstain, I was not here.
Oh, okay. Anyone here in July?
I wasn't, yes, ma'am. I was not here in July, ma'am.
Councilmember. Oh, Mr. McLaughlin.
Hi.
Thank you.
That's August.
Did we get a second on that? If we did, I guess. Oh, no, I got it. I got it. I'm all right.
Yeah.
They did never do this.
Okay, so that's passed, uh, minutes for July's council session. And now we have minutes for last month's council session, August. Uh, there wasn't a quorum, but there was. Councilmember McLaughlin and councilwoman White, uh, were present, so, uh, I need a motion to accept these.
Okay, item number four. Councilmember Mayfield. Councilmember Brown.
Abstain.
Councilmember.
Ah. It was interesting, man.
Okay. Minutes, uh, taken care of there. Item number five, any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? I don't have any, does any council member have additions or deletions? Got that. I don't see any here. Okay, moving on to old business. There is no old business to discuss tonight. Going straight into new business. Corby Thompson's joined us, uh, from Buzzcrown Associates. If you would.
Sure.
You've got the first item, uh, tonight.
Same with here?
Yeah, and there's a button switch on the podium there. Should turn green and then the mic's hot.
On the side of the mic. On the side there.
Exactly.
There you go.
All right.
You're on the air.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Uh, so yes, uh, tonight, one of the things we'll be doing is having the public hearing on the two thousand twenty six budget. Uh, over the past five weeks or so, um, I have worked with other mayors as well as the council to go over the line by line items of the budget, um, and really made some dramatic cuts to this budget. Um, there's a couple of different reasons why we need to do that, but, um, this council's done a great job on, on, on making these hard decisions on, on what we need in this budget. Um, so again, this was published on Gateway at budgetnotices.in.gov. Uh, I believe, um, on the twenty eighth or so. Um, that kind of outlined the, the bottom line property tax levies as well as the bottom line budget appropriations by fund that the city can adopt. Um, so again, we, we've gone through all of the budget lines specifically with the council, um, making sure that this is a budget that will work, will be sustainable to the city, um, and, and making sure that we don't have to hopefully go through this process again. Now, obviously, they, we've got Senate enrolled Act One that may force us to the, the table again to do something similar to this, um, here in the next three, four years potentially, but, um, again, just wanted to, you know, mention that we were working, um, with what we have. We're trying to maximize the revenues we have available to us. And we're just acting in then to the appropriations we may be able to, um, allow, uh, the city as far as total appropriations go and, um, the spending plan. So I didn't know if anybody has any questions or anything we'd like to add in addition to what I just mentioned. But again, this, this is a budget that is significant cuts in comparison to previous budgets. So, um, those are, those are really the big updates that we have here. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
No questions. Just want to mention again that, uh, you know, you, you said at one time, if you follow the pulse of the state of Indiana. Now, I'm only worried about Sullivan, Indiana, I get this. But Senate enrolled Act One has been passed by the state legislators this last year in their session. That is going to put a crunch on a lot, not a lot, every community in the state of Indiana. So I want to just say for the record, Senate enrolled Act One has been passed. It takes effect in two thousand twenty eight for the lit structure. And then property tax exemptions are coming. And it takes all the way through two thousand thirty one to get that full exemption of what the state legislators passed, maxed out to two thirds of the properties. Okay? Exemptions of two thirds of your property. So that is going to play a factor in city budgets plus city operations moving forward. Because like you said, cutting this year, we expect more cuts in the future based on Senate enrolled Act One. So there's no numbers right now that are solidified on revenue generation. And there's no exact numbers of what's going to be lost. And you guys have social media and you see a lot of mayors on social media throughout the state. They are addressing their concerns with their cities. So, uh, just be, be on the record right now that Senate enrolled Act One is approaching. Let's just say that way, okay? Okay? And I just wanted to emphasize that, so, uh, go ahead, sorry.
Not only is it the community, it's the counties as well. Not just the cities and towns. It is the county as well. Schools.
Yes.
Libraries.
We have a question.
Where did you say this was posted at?
Uh, so this is posted through the, it's called the Gateway website. This is the kind of the, um, financial portal for municipal government. Um, you're required to submit what they call the Form Three through that portal. Uh, and it gets published on budgetnotices.in.gov, which is where all cities, towns, counties, townships, budgets get posted.
Anyway, okay.
Yeah. I suppose you may have a question for it.
Yeah.
This is a former clerk treasurer.
Yeah, you used to have.
A former court, uh, town manager, former.
Town, no, just a town clerk.
Just town clerk, former. So she may have questions offline. I have words for you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you used to have to publish this in the paper. They did away with that, um, gosh, five, six years ago, maybe.
I'm old.
Okay. So, um, yeah, the, so now everything's basically posted on that budget notices.in.gov website.
You go to gateway, gateway first.
You can, you can access it through Gateway. I just know that's the specific URL you can go to, and I believe it's, I believe that URL will take you to Gateway.
Okay.
In a, in a foreign fashion, but, but yeah, if you just Google Indiana Gateway.
I'm sorry.
If you just Google Indiana Gateway.
Okay.
It, it should come up.
Thank you.
No worries. Can you hear me? I'd like to make a comment. Uh, the mayor talked about social media. And I think it's critical at this point to keep that in mind when you read the kind of, quite frankly, lies that you're going to see. Because of the nature of our society now, you're going to hear that we're bankrupt, you're going to hear all kinds of stupid things on social media. So I would just try to urge all the citizens, Isaac, if you could put that in there, to go on Gateway, look at the budget. But we've been doing this for five weeks, line by line, with this gentleman being fantastic in his work. And I'm telling you, it is like the mayor said, the forces on the city and our finances are amazing. And it's not just one thing. This, you know, I mean, uh, we will take, you know, responsibility for the budget in the city of Sullivan. The first post you're going to see where, you know, some stupid thing is put on social media. I'm so tired of that. I can't stand it. And this is the first issue as a city councilman where we can't explain it because they're not going to pay any attention anyway. So please, Isaac, if you could.
We'll do it.
You know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
Because I know it's coming. And, uh, I, I, you know, it's, it's a tough job. It's been a very time consuming process. And it's, but it's more than just, you know, whether you mow the grass. I mean, it's, there's so many things that you have to take into consideration. Not from the spending standpoint either, also from the revenue standpoint. So that's all I wanted to say, to keep an open mind, keep a truthful mind in what we're trying to do here, so. There you go, Corby. Hey, it worked.
Tell you, Tom. Anything else for?
Oh, I had to.
Do you know, okay. Item C, Civic Center rates.
We got a vote.
Uh, no, there's no vote tonight. That's the introduction to the budget of two thousand twenty six.
This is the introduct, well, this is the public hearing for the budget, so we do need to open the floor to the public to.
Public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Uh, all right, so is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Yeah.
Yeah, but don't we have to?
Oh, I can adjourn the council meeting. Okay, we're going to adjourn this one and open up a public hearing and.
Correct.
And.
I make the motion to regular session of the common council before public.
You have a question back here.
Uh, yeah, I just had a quick question since this is the budget hearing, so I don't know what, what other opportunities I'd have to ask questions. Do you want me to come up here?
Well, we're, we're going to close the meeting and then open it up for the public.
Okay, okay. I misunderstood. My bad.
You're fine.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Board member White. Board member Mayfield.
Hi.
Board member McLaughlin.
Hi. Yeah. All right, so that's closed. Let's open the public hearing for the budget of two thousand twenty six. So it is open. And is there any members here that have questions or comments or questions, comments about this? There you go, Isaac, step up.
All right, the song and dance is completed. And where's this button? Okay, we're already live.
Already on.
Okay, so we've talked a little bit about the budget. It's now on Gateway, the proposed one. Um, so I guess in a brief synopsis, in a nutshell, what are the funds that are being most impacted? Because, you know, we talked about, uh, the language being used, uh, dramatic or drastic cuts, so just kind of get an idea of where that money's being taken out, I guess.
Yeah, those are very good questions. Um, the budget cuts are primarily being made in the, or the city's general fund. So, which is the fund that every, um, taxing unit in the state has. It's, it's right, your, it's your general fund. Um, and that has the departments for your police, your fire, common council, clerk treasurer. There's, there's several, yeah, street, well, there's some streets in there that's really more M V H, but, um, so that, those would be, that would be the primary fund that I would say is, is being required to have cuts. Um, where those cuts are being made is kind of throughout the fund in its entirety. Uh, we, we are having to, um, you know, revisit staffing, right? For the, for the city as a whole. That was something we looked at this year. Um, you know, a city's budget's typically around fifty percent wages and benefits. Um, so that's kind of the first place we look for when we're, when we're looking to meet cuts. So if there's something specific, um, as far as the general fund goes, I can answer that, but that would be, uh, the first place we looked at making cuts. Uh, the second place would have been the local income tax fund. For kind of shifting appropriations around in order to allow certain funds to cash flow properly. But yeah, when, when I'm mentioning the, the budget cuts, I'm primarily speaking on the general fund.
All right.
Uh, I just want to ask one quick follow up to that. So you're saying the general fund is being cut. Well, how much, you know, percentage wise, if you could tell me?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we have an approximate twenty percent cut for the general fund, so.
That's across the board.
That's across the board. I mean, right, we're not just cutting every single line by twenty percent. There's, there's places that we can show us, but yeah, as far as the general fund as a whole goes, uh, we did, we're looking at about a twenty percent decrease in the overall appropriations.
Some primary revenue source for the general fund?
Property taxes, your property tax distributions, which have been greatly impacted by circuit breaker losses, um, which is one of the reasons why we really have to make these cuts. Um, you know, the city's been able to get by with some of the cash reserves it's had over the past, you know, few years. Uh, but, you know, we're, we're at heads with it now. Uh, the circuit breaker losses are estimated at around seven hundred thousand dollars for the city next year, um, which is significant. You know, we're looking at about thirty eight percent. So when that, not even getting into.
Gone over year after year.
Right, that's, yeah, that's, right, it's not just a one time.
In two thousand eight, when that was voted on in state legislature, so every year we've lost.
Significant, yeah.
We haven't lost. We have not gotten what we should have gotten.
The circuit breaker has grown over time.
The other thing real quick, um.
It was tied to the property tax cap of a way.
Right. The, the other thing too, there, even in the general fund that he's talking about on the, the property tax receipt, we are subsidizing it as well. There, it is being subsidized, the general fund.
See.
Through your lit and other things. I mean, another.
I want to make two points on top of that is the Southwest School.
Because we have to keep the city operating. We are using it by the place.
The Southwest School Corporation learned last year what circuit breaker was. Uh, they didn't learn last year what it was, but they anticipated a lower amount and it was significantly higher at the, at the Southwest School Corporation. And that's the same thing. So it's impacting, like we said earlier, every entity that receives the property taxes. Library is what Jeannie said. You know, school system was mentioned over here, the city government, county governments, you know, that, so every level there is, um, will see reductions.
Township government.
Townships. So on top of that, the, uh, state legislators have given the tools to county governments to create revenue sources when they take the revenue from the lower entities. Am I correct?
Generally speaking, yes.
They, they've had the tools. There's a senator that said it this last session that said, he's giving the tools out. Quite frankly, we're frustrated that we're hearing all this slashing and feedback, uh, on them. And when there's tools that's been handed out, but some choose not to use those tools. So that, that's another point that needs to be emphasized.
And, and what I'll say to that too is that that was kind of the same argument too, back when they enacted the circuit breaker credits, right? Everybody was supposed to have the ability to make up for that loss. Well, maybe some of it was, but are you made whole? You know, I, I don't know, right? You know, we'd have to, right, right, you might not be able to.
And mark that they've taken, you may not be able to fill all that hole in, like you said.
And if it's up to the county as opposed to which some of this new legislation will put some local income tax control in your guys' hands now. Is that actually a good thing for the city or not is?
Which will be less revenue.
Right, it's, right, it's, yeah, still don't have firm numbers there, but, but.
You can, you can count on it.
Yeah.
Some of the tools that were put in place was not in the control of the city council. It was in play through the county council.
Correct.
Does the ability to raise local taxes for income purposes, is it capped?
It is capped on a percentage basis.
So the state capped our ability to raise more local taxes to make up for that difference.
Yes.
That's your one point taken. The one point. I want to make the point that, you know, we just can't go out and.
You can't, you can't.
Go in these holes with a local city tax. One thing, cities can't impose a tax in the first place, or local income maybe. But, you know, we are bound by limits and caps on that, is what I'm trying to say.
Correct.
And what a lot of people, I'll go back to that lit tax that's coming in twenty seven, is that correct, the year?
You pass it October twenty seven and it goes into effect twenty eight.
Twenty eight, the, the city of Sullivan, residents of the city of Sullivan are going to, whatever we adopt at a rate, plus you're going to pay the county rate on top of that. So the potential is going to be two point nine percent. A lot, a lot of people don't, aren't getting that either, that live in the city, that you're going to pay the city's income and you're going to pay the county's income.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
And that's one point, so, right. And whenever.
Depends what the county adopts too, right? Obviously, it depends what you guys adopt, right?
City adopts, but we've been receiving one point five in our lit fund the past, when that was enacted, as the rates went up.
You may not.
And then it's going to drop down to one point two. Now, those calculations are probably going to be a little bit lower.
Yes.
So there's going to be a shortfall in that money as well, coming down the road. That's why we're trying to be proactive now and not have to do it and work towards it as we get into it.
Yeah, and, and I do want to mention that in this budget too, you know, we are passing the two thousand twenty six budget, but it's also very important that we make sure that we have a budget that's sustainable. So not just for next year, what about twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine?
Because, yeah, when, like JD said, when those start hitting, hmm, those cuts are going to be there again, so you start now and.
Yep. Yes.
I have a question. Is there a place where you have this last year's budget that compares to this year's budget?
Um, we can provide you something. Uh, I don't believe the Form Three that's published, so the notice for today, I don't believe it has that information, but we can provide you something if that's something you would like.
If I go onto this gateway, would it show me both last year's and this year?
If you went onto Gateway, you could see what last year's budget was. You can see last year's adopted budget.
Right.
And then you could see this year's proposed budget, yes.
Thank you.
You did hit there, when you talked about the general fund and property taxes are the main revenue source for them. And you talked about what's the departments that are hit by that again? What's the largest department in that? I'm looking at the two guys right here. I know what you're going to say. Is it public safety?
It, it is. Your, your biggest department in your general fund.
Funding comes out of the general fund. Am I right in saying that?
What was?
Eighty percent of your funding. Probably, probably more.
Yeah, I would, it could be more, but, but sure.
I just wanted to go on record and say that too, Isaac.
You would say a vast majority.
Your pencil's burning up back here.
So you would say for the record.
I just wanted to say that public safety is funded through the general account.
Okay.
General fund. And he's sitting here telling us that fund has to be cut, 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 cut. Any other questions, comments for Corby during the, any other public want to address the council in this public hearing?
Corby, I got a question. Used to be, I think, possibly the general fund about seventy five or eighty percent of it did go to public safety. Are we still in that range?
I can rough a calculation here. We've had about half a million dollars of the general fund's budget for public safety. We have about a one point two million dollar budget, so it's closer to maybe forty percent.
I'd like to mention that several years ago, we had almost eight hundred, over eight hundred thousand for public safety. So it's now down to.
And I think there are some other places where we pay public safe, so it's not just these amounts. There are other funds and sources.
Be out of the general fund.
Yes. Yeah, that, that.
Was over eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, I can look at, if I look at two thousand twenty four, for example, which is probably the easiest way to compare the new budgets, um, for the twenty six budget for a couple of different reasons, but we had over six hundred thousand, yeah, in two thousand twenty four. So over a hundred thousand dollars has been cut just from public safety, right?
Two years.
Last couple of years, yes.
Yeah, and more before that. Plus, the general fund also funds the insurance and all the utilities, basically, for the city, doesn't it? Or have those been moved to another fund?
Yes, so. Yeah.
That's what I was referring to. The insurance.
Yeah, the, the insurance is primarily paid out of the general fund. I believe some is also paid through the sewer utility. Um, but yeah, the general fund is the, what I call civil fund that pays for the insurance. And that is, that is a big expenditure.
That is a big expenditure.
Yeah, so I guess I'll mention that too when it comes to the public safety. We don't have the, um, you know, health insurance premiums within those departments. That's under the common council's budget. So as I said, five hundred thousand, I, there's probably another fifty thousand dollars in health insurance premiums that can be allocated to public safety.
I just think the public needs to know the cuts.
A quick, just a comment. I always, I would go to all the AIM conferences every year, which is the Association of Indiana Municipalities. We had one big room dedicated to, we'll say, the property taxes and how it, how it's calculated and so forth. You know, the attacks and the breakers and whatever. And one of the speakers was a state legislator, and he said, half the legislature doesn't understand this, so don't be ashamed if you're sitting here in the dark about trying to figure out some of this terminology. So it's real complicated. And you get lost, you get lost in some of the terminology and why don't we have the money? Former mayor's been saying for years, this is going to keep, like, it's, it's going to keep going down and down. I heard him say it a bunch of times. And it's finally here. It's nothing. And it's finally here. It's nothing to do with anything the previous administration did or anything at all like that. It's this system we're in, so. But it's, it's, it's affecting the whole state, and I think that's, that bill's gonna be looked at again eventually. It'll have to because of all the destruction that it's causing.
If they have their way, Doug, they're gonna cut more.
And you may be right, too, Scott. You may be right.
I mean, there's gonna be all kinds of municipalities in Indiana that are gonna be in a tough spot. If everything that's, was passed with SCA 1, if that's implemented and goes through with the way that they passed it, there's gonna be lots of communities across the state that are gonna be cutting all kinds of essential local government services.
Services that these people.
That they're accustomed to, right, yes.
And the other thing I just, public comments, we are working towards a fire territory as well. What? This might say, I'm speaking. Oh, I thought somebody said, "We're talking loud." Sorry, I don't hear real well. We are working toward a fire territory that would ease the budget from the city, and then the territory would be on its own standing.
Yeah, I mean.
That money can be shifted over to other, into the, then the general fund for the police. I mean, that's the big alpha, right?
Yeah, and I'll mention, I mean, this is a council that's been very open to anything and everything that's available to us, just to try to make this as easy of a transition as we can have. So I do thank you guys for being very open and all of that. But, yeah, fire territory is another way that we could potentially ease some of this, you know, cash flow issue for the city.
It's not gonna happen overnight. It, it working now, working to start it, even if it, every, every township or the township, city, everyone agrees, everything goes right along. This will not start, it wouldn't start until 2027. So next year, this budget we're putting forward will fund our fire department through 26. Yeah, and the township does, they pay for the fire services they do receive now, or that, they are paying. And they do buy equipment as well, but, yeah, I don't leave that out, but, yes. So who's gonna suffer the most through what we're cutting? Say the fire is, through what's gonna happen in 26, police.
Yeah.
That's the, that's my, that's the way I see it.
Yeah, or you could argue for the taxpayers. I mean, they're, you know, they're not gonna get maybe what they were historically received as far as some of the services go, you know, we're, nobody wants that. It's just a situation of cash, of the financial situation.
And bringing back up, I don't wanna be repetitive, but it will be, the circuit breaker is around $700,000, and that's a game changer right there. Would we be having any of these problems if that circuit breaker was not in existence?
No, I mean, even if the circuit breaker was half, we probably wouldn't be having these conversations.
Like you said, it's not money we give back, it's not money we receive, and they tell us that number.
Yeah.
And it's just, is what it is, but it's a circuit breaker credits. So, any other public here to comment during this public hearing on the budget for 2026? You're nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing for the budget of 2026? And reopen at the same time? And reopen the common council meeting for September 2025.
Indeed. Do we need to sign a paper that we read a public hearing? No, not this one.
Did we have a second?
In a minute.
Got it.
Thank you.
Let's close the public hearing and open up the regular session again.
Right.
BJ made them.
Councilmember White, Councilmember Mayfield, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember.
All right, so now we're back into the common council regular session, September 2025. Moving to item C here, Civic Center rates. If you look through your packet here, you'll see, you know, just what we just got done talking about. My recommendation here is to, I talked to the Civic Center director, and you see there's three sheets here towards the end, not four sheets, and the proposed rates are the first sheet. The second sheet will show you the difference in the rates. Handwritten on the left column is the increases to the Commons area, Grand Room, and Friday, Saturday, Sunday for the Grand Room is different than Monday through Thursday. And it just shows you, again, on the front page, what I'm proposing and recommend to you guys to take in consideration because of future revenue losses and catching up to 2025. On other things, in the past, we increased the charge sheets when we go out and do work after giving a notice from the code enforcement officer. You know, those rates have never climbed up over the past couple of decades. So we increased those to match today's times, and that's what I'm proposing here with the Civic Center rentals. So is there any questions on the?
When will these go into effect?
Uh, one January.
Okay, you said it, I didn't hear it.
I got a question.
Should stay on one of these sheets, yeah.
Okay. Here it says Grand Room, Monday through Thursday, $400, and deposit is $200. And over here on the, no, and it said deposit 75.
That's the old, the second sheet's the old numbers, and I didn't write down the increases in my, in handwriting off this side, but it's proposing a deposit increase also. So I just wrote down the, really, the fee, where you see the old fee here. Wrote down the increase in hand with my pen.
Yep.
And then that's what it reflects here. So I didn't write down the increase of the deposit. There is an increase of deposit, too. Yeah, and one January, proposing it to go into effect one January. And having said that, the people already have something locked in that's. Yes.
Anything that's previously.
Been billed with this sheet. Any new additional rentals would go on the new rental fees if you guys deem to pass those new rates, so. Aim, she's still looking over, so. Any other questions, comments, or anyone want to make a motion to accept the new rates? Patty's still kind of working on some things here, so. So, yeah, if questions or comments or thoughts, or I would
I'll make the motion.
Take the motion to accept the new rates. Second, and Councilman Brown made the motion.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Cleo.
Aye.
Okay, so that passed. Item D on the new business list here is opioid funds. I have asked Ms. DeProwe to come here tonight. I've kind of talked to you guys individually and, you know, about this pack right here. I made a couple proclamations this month, suicide awareness and addiction and recovery, to where this pack right here means a lot. With that, I've also talked about, you know, how I feel just the increase everywhere with, you know, accessibility and, you know, just drugs out there have, from my perspective, just increased everywhere, not just here in the city of Sullivan, not just the county of Sullivan, just, it's, it's so important that the addiction and recovery is addressed and the stigma. I think all my proclamations have said, you know, we gotta, you know, we need to address this. It needs to be spoken about. Suicide awareness, one life is too many to lose. So Lisa, you know, would you step up and kind of, if you didn't bring a bag, I've got a bag, and she's got a bag, you know? I'm gonna recommend to the council, you know, we've had opioid in settlement where we receive opioid money in two categories. Attorney Falwell made it address here in a minute. He's got some numbers here to where she needs some help providing some bags here. She can take it over, Ms. DeProwe.
All righty. Thank you. So about six years ago, I became a loss survivor of a suicide with a person that I was engaged to. So that's a lot of what started me going down, working on suicide mental health awareness, that type of thing. It kind of carries over into substance abuse because those two oftentimes go hand in hand. It didn't in my case. But working through some training with suicide awareness, I realized that I wanted to do something. You don't go through that kind of a loss. I didn't without thinking, okay, I'm gonna try to make a difference in my community. So these bags, they're twofold. They're to try to mitigate risks if you know there's a family member where somebody may be struggling with mental health issues or substance abuse issues, both. So I'm passing them around. If you look at the kits, I'll go over the cost of each item that's in there, but I've partnered with several different people to do this. So Chris Aggie is providing the cable locks. There's three things that are in there. There's a gun lock. So if you know somebody's at risk of using a firearm to take their life, there's a cable lock or gun lock that's in there. If you find somebody that may have overdosed, or you're not sure if they've overdosed, there's Narcan in there. Narcan, you can use up to two, two of the little containers there without hurting a person. It's not gonna hurt them if you use that. And then also in the kits are, it's called DeTera, which is the one thing that I'm having a little bit of trouble getting the funds for. So DeTera is in the bags. It's a little purple, or a little black and teal color kit. So what you do with the DeTera is if somebody is at risk of doing an overdose or taking an overdose, those kits, you just rip the top off the DeTera kit, you put the pills down in there. JD's got a copy of, or one of those up there. You put the pills down in there, you put water, you seal it, and it deactivates that. So that's the one item right now that I think I've exhausted. Everybody in the county that has those. So I did find out today that DeTera, it's a company that's actually in Minnetonka, Minnesota, but I've also reached out to them, and they're gonna sell those to me at cost. So 200 of those packets are $856. So that's the money that I'm trying to find a resource to come up with right now. The packs, that company is called CMC Designs. They're out of Scottsdale, Arizona. They sell those to me at cost of the little day packs, the little blue things, cost me $10. I think the hundred that I order is normally like $1,045 with shipping. So right now, I've had, we did, when I first started this project, it was in the, at the first of the year. And the prison, they make quilts, if everybody didn't know that. They do make quilts down there. So they donated a quilt to West Side Church, which is where I attend. We raffled that off. We raised $872. And then the town of Shelburne wrote me a check for $500, so that got me going. So, and then we've had private people that have come to me and says, hey, you know, we want to donate, give us, you know, give us what amount that you need. The health department, they just sent me a check last week because they have additional funds this year. So I have 100 more of the day packs on my front porch to stuff, but I've got to get the things to stuff them with. So organizations that I work with, I work with American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and I work for Team of Mercy. Team of Mercy's local. American Foundation for Suicide Prevention is a national organization. And the whole idea, I found out about it last year, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, there's an event called the International Survivors of Suicide Loss Day. And the state of Indiana director for AFSP contacted me and asked me if I would hold that event in Sullivan. There'd never been one ever held in the southwest part of the state. So I did hold that last year. Somebody that attended, his name is Boone Taylor, he's a veteran, and he started the PAC project down in Jasper for veterans, because he's a veteran and saw veterans struggling. So I said, "Can I steal your idea?" And he said, "Sure, steal the idea." So I stole the idea, came up with everything that's in there. Also in the packs, I mentioned the gun lock, the DeTera, the Narcan. In the front little pocket there, I'm not sure if I've got everything in there because I'm running out of my little business cards, too, but there's a 988 number, there's a Veterans Crisis Line number, there's a Team of Mercy card that has sign, what to watch for, like signs and symptoms of somebody that may be in trouble. And then we have a church, there's a card for the church that's got a scripture on there talking about the Lord being close to those that are brokenhearted. So that's what's in the packs, and I really have been surprised how well it's been accepted. I know they've been used. I know things have been handed out. I know right now, instead of me asking people if they want bags, people are calling me and saying, "How many bags can we get?" Because the police department has them, the sheriff's department has them. I met with the firefighters a couple of weeks ago over in Douger where all the fire chiefs and everybody meets. I've met with Thunderbird Fire Rescue. Reef House has some of these, so does Recovery Cafe. I've had individuals at church ask me for them because somebody may know somebody that's struggling. I talked to a high school class a couple of weeks ago. Some of them came up after and said, "I've got XYZ in my family. Can you send one home with me?" Which that was up to the teacher. That wasn't my decision. But the, the suicide numbers in our county, the bad thing about looking for suicide numbers in the county, if you're trying to find what our rate is, is that the person, if the person is not pronounced deceased until they're in another county, that's where the statistic counts. It doesn't count, even if they're a Sullivan resident, if they're taken to Terre Haute or Indianapolis, and that's where they pass, that's where that statistic comes. So our numbers, if you look at them, they're very skewed because a lot of our numbers aren't counted here in our county, which impacts funding, amongst other things. So that's, that's my project. That's what I've been working on. But I'm going, I went last week to Knox County. I've shared these in Green County. I'm going to Vanderburg County, which is Evansville. I've been asked to come down there. I just, I keep getting asked. They've been shown over in Johnson County, Bartholomew, which is like, I think that's Columbus, like that area over there. So it's like, me trying to do this as a small project, it's really, it's gotten a lot bigger. But it's great because, you know what, if they save one person, if they save one person, you know, the Narcan. One of the things about Narcan that I always try to hit on, I've talked at church about this, too, is if you have an elderly family member or a family member, maybe, that has come home from the hospital on some really heavy duty pain pills, and you find them, and they're out of it, and you don't know if they're overdosed, if they've had a heart attack, anything like that, you can use Narcan in those situations, too. So a lot of people, they're like, "Oh, wow, we didn't know that," you know? So a lot of people that have elderly parents that their caretakers for, they'll, they'll keep those around just because you can use it in that instance, too. And so double duty, but I want to make sure everybody knows that because I don't want people to assume it's for somebody that's on drugs because it could be life-saving for somebody that's elderly or somebody that doesn't have the capacity to manage their medications. So I think that's it. Sorry, I talked fast. I know I was trying to get through, but. I did? Well, thank you, Tom. Thank you. Yeah, I've talked about this a lot. Like I said, I have a passion, I think, you know, having gone through a loss like I went through, it gives you a whole different perspective. You know, I have a passion for trying to not put anybody in a situation like I went through. And there's been a couple of situations that have happened in my, my life. JD's heard this story. There was a gentleman, sorry, I mean, two years ago now, my pond damn person, driving home from work. Now, you tell you, this is where I know I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. Driving home past my mom's house, in between my mom's house and my house is a pond. So I look over, and in the weeds on the pond was a body, and I'm like, oh, and there was no car around, there was no nothing around there, no people, no nothing. So I stopped, and I started to honk. Person didn't arouse up, and I'm like, oh, great, you know, I called a couple of people to see if anybody was around, and nobody was. So I knew I had to get out of the car. So I looked over there, I started hollering at the person, and long story short, it was an individual that had picked that spot to end their life that day. They were 30, 32, 33 years old. And he was just laying there, and he, you know, kind of asking. He was, he was conscious. He told me he had not taken drugs. He had drank a lot of alcohol. But very well dressed, very well groomed. Everything about him was just like, like us, you know, and, but he just decided that was it. And I did, I called 911, of course, and then they ended up showing up, and he went to Terre Haute. But he ended up, I found out he did survive that and is doing well now. But, I mean, if that doesn't tell me that I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing, I don't know what is. He was 30, I think he'll be 32, and had three kids. And in all the training that I have, and you guys probably know this, I'll tell you that, that's the stuff you do. Find one thing for them to hang on to, to keep them here, you know, and it happened to be with him, three kids. I said, they need their dad, they need their dad, you know? And so anyway, that's when I'm like, everybody's like, well, you know why he was there, you know, you know? You know why he was there, because you knew what to do with him, and you saved him. And that's a very humbling, very humbling thing to know. So anyway, that's how I know I'm doing what I'm doing. I'm supposed to be in that seat, so. You guys have any questions? Like I say, the packs are, we're not charging anything, that's one thing that I didn't say. We're handing these out, and right now, I'm close to about a hundred and fifty, because I have a hundred more packs of stuff now. So total about a hundred and fifty, and you guys have them still, I think, don't you? And I know that they've been used, and fire department dispatchers. I don't know who all in the county has them now, because people keep asking, can we have some? So I gotta, I gotta get my resources going again.
So that's the cost per bag, right here, I was saying today.
Is, did you figure, I don't even know what the cost of it is, what is it?
Fifteen twenty-eight.
Fifteen, that's probably about right, yeah.
Free gun lock, resources card to get through, I don't know if it costs something, but you got free on here. Narcan's free, because you get it through.
Yeah.
And then drug disposal gets four dollars twenty cents. When you said you, eight hundred dollars for.
Yeah, eight, eight fifty-six for two hundred, eight fifty-six. Yeah. So and those are at cost too. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's around fifteen to fifteen and a half dollars per bag. And I think, any questions for Lisa? That's it, I will let the council determine that, because if you wanna tell them about, you saw the funds right here, you can tell them the amount, tell them how the county does receive portions, and they have dispersed theirs out. Not all their portions have went out, they have broken it down to different areas. And Attorney Falwell's on the J-RAC board and set through some of these, so. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that J-RAC board, when all this started, just a quick history, was an opioid settlement due to the epidemic that was literally running across the United States. And so the Sackler family got hit hard, along with some of the companies that they dealt with, like Kroger and Purdue Pharma. And they settled it and they structured it. You see that on TV sometimes about people wanting to buy your structured settlement, if you got one. But anyway, they took that money then and structured it. It's gonna pay out, it's billions of dollars. It's gonna pay out between now and two thousand thirty-eight and one batch of a settlement, and another one's gonna pay out till two thousand thirty-five. So it's gonna come every year, but each year it dissipates a little more, a little more, a little more, unless something else happens. And I'm getting this information, so I don't wanna misquote or misstate anything. Most of it's coming from the Attorney General's Office. I've got a contact there that's very knowledgeable, and she's the lead counsel there on the opioid funds. And I have to say, she's been a big help, she's very knowledgeable. So they broke, so they started, they passed all this money to the states, and they said, now you need to set up a, set up a system. And so we want you to start out with a state committee. And then when you disperse it to the counties, they need to have a county committee. And it's called a Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. J-RAC for short. Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council is what they call. So the state's got the mothership, if you wanna call it that. And then all the counties have their J-RAC boards. And it's made up according to, pretty much to statute, but it has about fifteen members. I should have brought that with me, but like the mayor's on it, the, the, both judges are on it. Prosecutor's on it, probationer officer's on it. Jim Goodman from the Division of Family and Children is on it. Superintendent of Schools, I should have somebody from North Central, I don't think we do, but Chris Stitzel's on it. And it goes on and on, like, and the sheriff's on it, of course. And then you got one commissioner on it, representing the commissioners board, and one county council person on it, representing the county council board. So it's, it's a pretty good crosscut of the community, if you will, of sorts. And it's by people who've been, we'll say, most directly impacted as a whole with regards to the drugs and opioid epidemic and all that's happened. You know, expense to police departments and foster parents and families that have had, you know, the expense they went through, just some expense on suicide treatment, et cetera. If you're, just all kinds of, and so they, so they took that money then, they decided they're gonna put it in two categories, so kinda listen to me on this, because it was confusing to me at first. I finally got it figured out, thanks to SC, Attorney General's Office. They put out the biggest batch out to what they call Restricted Fund. And then they put out a smaller, it's like two-thirds for Restricted, about a third for what they call Unrestricted. And the difference is, the Restricted can only be used for, we'll say, opioid issues. And all that, all that encompasses, these things, for example. Include, include infrastructure buildings, like Recovery Cafe or Ruth House, different places. Howard's over there, it was on the square now, Kurt Howard, you know, that kinda stuff. Recovery Ministry, so there's several. Marim, trying to, whatever, but there's several that have applied. So we made one distribution, there's supposed to be two a year, two a year. And they tell you that you can use the Unrestricted though, and it was kind of, kind of a crude, the way they put, way it was put to me, but they said, Doug, the county can use this to reimburse themselves for all this incidental expenses they've had to suffer through with opioid use. But they don't have to, they can use it as sharpened pencils if they want to. But technically, they should try to use it toward those issues that have been impacted by the opioid. Like I said, I think Sullivan County's really short on foster parents. It's awful. Like there's sixty-some kids that need foster parents in the county, only half that many parents. Just different things like that. You could use it to maybe help fund that. So that Unrestricted then can be used to pay police officers, fire departments, and everything else that you guys. But that, that's how it's broken down. So they put out this, for this year, they just now dispersed it, or getting ready to. We got one little portion of it. Last year was almost three hundred thousand dollars, I think, that we distributed. This year, it's a hundred and six.
Sullivan County.
Sullivan County, yeah.
He's gonna tell you the city's number.
Yeah, jump anytime you want. So it's like a hundred and sixty grand this year, within a dollar too. I rounded it up just a little bit. So we've already gotten thirty-five thousand, that came in about a month ago. And of that, thirty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand is for Restricted. And the ten thousand is Unrestricted. So we're gonna deal with that, I think, in October, maybe November at the latest. But we're not gonna do anything with it yet till we get that second disbursement. And, and Mr. Nardi says we're gonna get that, she thinks by the end of this month, or the first of October. And that should be the rest of the hundred and sixty thousand total that we're supposed to get. So then, after we get that, it comes into the commissioners, and then they send it off to J-RAC and said, hey, get proposals from people, run an ad in the paper, say, hey, we got money out there where people thinks they can use it for opioid uses and so forth. Send us your proposals. So we've seen some really nice proposals, that are really well put together. So we look through those as a group and then try to use what we've got and disperse that out according to what the figures might show and what we think one may be entitled to versus another, what they ask for versus another. And then some, if we, we don't have an opioid fund in particular, we can use it for, we can go ahead and recommend that the Unrestricted, that the county can do what they want with. But we can recommend to them, we think they should use it for this, this, and this. But they don't have to. They did the first round, we did, but they're starting to look at it a little bit now. They figured out that's money the county can kind of use in ways they think it should be used. And I mean that in a good way. So when this.
This is the first time we've discussed opioid here, kinda drilling it down to what our numbers are, so go ahead.
So, so what they did, Beth, he said, Ms. Nardi, I've gotten to know her real well. She says, when they disperse this, like there's six hundred and some, I think she said, categories in the, in the state. When you take that money and break it up six hundred ways, it dissipates out pretty quick, even though it sounds like billions of dollars, but it, in this, for the state of Indiana. So it dissipates out pretty quick, because there's six hundred and some users, or I forget what she called them, recipients, I think is what she called them, that will receive the money. So once that gets figured out by the budget department and the, the, oh, I think she said the, oh, the other department that does the dispersment, there's two departments that figure it out. And so they're gonna figure that out, and then they break it loose. She said, like, like last year, it was funny how they did it, she didn't understand how they did it. The county got a big chunk, like I said. And then they decided to give a little bit to the cities and towns in certain, in certain counties. Last year, I think Sullivan got like twelve or, there's some figures on here, maybe twenty. And Farmersburg got some money, and I forget now, but nobody else did. And there was a reason for it, I don't remember the logic to it, but.
They've got some groups that will disperse it out according to what comes in. So, yeah, that's, that's the nutshell of it.
So hopefully, we should get a little money for the city from this last, next batch, but I don't know how much it's gonna be, even though the county gets the bulk of it.
The larger portion, you guys go to the county. Where's that, you just showed me the, the report with it on there. Okay, yeah, so the opioid restricted is twelve thousand, and this is as of nine-five, two thousand twenty-five was when this was ran. So it's within the last week or two.
That's how much you got in your account, so.
Yeah, so the restricted is twelve thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. The opioid unrestricted is six thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety cents. So that's the combination, I'm gonna give you roughly twenty thousand dollars is, is what's in the opioid accounts. So off that is, you know, I would recommend, she needs support with these bags. You know, do you guys have questions, comments, concerns, anything for Lisa to address?
And you being the council, my legal opinion is you're the financial, and also the legislative. So you can disperse, vote on dispersing that, in my opinion, tonight if you wanted to. I don't think you have to ask for proposals, like the county does. But they make, they have them ask for proposals, but that's the only little snag I can think of. We might have to put out for proposals, but I think you could go ahead and put part of it. For this right now, not having a problem, this, this would definitely qualify, so.
One thing I wanted to add, excuse me. Because of the fact that I do the suicide awareness too, in our county, there's two risk areas that we have that probably hits about everybody in here. Two of the populations of people in occupations that are way above average of taking their life. Number one's coal mining, and number two's construction. So American Foundation for Suicide Prevention actually has a new project this year that's dealing specifically with construction workers. But coal mining is, is high too, it's way above the average. So that's another reason, because some of these, and I retired from coal mining, from working at Bear Run. So I saw, I saw that up close a lot. But I think that weighs into these too, is, you know, when you think about the opioid and all that, a lot of times they go so hand in hand. But if a person's on something and they're thinking about using a firearm, you know, lock their guns up. And, and I can get all kind of locks or cable locks if I need to from Chris Aggie at the veterans. So, you know, that's another red flag area for our county, not only the opioid, but also the opioid and the suicide rates and the populations of people that we have a lot in our county. So I wanted to make sure to throw that out there too.
You could disperse this, some of this tonight. Next month, I'll have you an answer on whether by the end of the year, what are we happy to get from this next batch, plus this, this other batch you got, you already got. Whether you have to ask for proposals or not, to be, treat everybody fairly, say, hey, if we got money, we're gonna distribute. Let us know what you wanna use, they wanna use it for. I think you can go ahead, that's for suicide prevention, and that money needs to be put to use to save lives. So I, I'll say, I'll take a legal opinion, you can definitely vote on that if you want. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Tom.
That's okay, I just wondered if we would, if the opioid dollars in this case is like twelve grand.
Correct.
Uh, one, one fund, yeah.
Twelve-five, that one.
Does that have to, can that cover the cost that she's asking for?
Oh, I recommend you start out like a thousand dollars for her to buy fifteen dollar bags. How, I don't know, I, you break out the numbers there and see, how many bags does that get her? She said there's an eight hundred dollar amount to get two hundred.
Eight fifty-six is what I need right now, to be able to stuff a hundred bags.
Ask for something specific.
Eight hundred fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Next month, we can talk more, so once I make sure I get, I haven't coached them yet on what, how the J-RAC, they're like a mini J-RAC community, if you wanna call it that, so.
Vote on a thousand dollars to help her right now, is that?
My question would be, like, the bags inside the city here? I mean, this is, you know, county supports the county, the city, are you gonna pass them out in the city here? You said churches, and I, I would.
I pass them out everywhere, yeah.
They can take it anywhere and it could save a life, and that's what we wanna do. But is it like, you know, I know they've received some, and I bet they're out, they're low on some, but we need to restock them, the fire department, and, you know, like I said, churches may have some. Some people go to them for assistance that may need some of that attention.
Ruth House has those, Recovery Cafe has those, Hathaway's Ministry has them, so.
Ran out too, and you've had to restock them and replenish them. So there's plenty of places in Sullivan that could really use these. And it's just making sure, you've gone through quite a bit. And I believe it was a year ago, I can't tell you the date, but we were in this room right here when we first introduced them to everyone, so. That's my recommendation to you guys, but you guys talk, ask questions freely and.
I'd like to make a motion, we give fifteen hundred dollars, go to the thousand.
There a second?
Second.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Aye.
Aye.
The right eye.
Thank you all, because these are being put, they are being put to use.
I'm just stopping this week or next, you know, like just working with the clerk treasurer's office to receive that, okay?
Okay, thank you all, appreciate it.
So going on down to department reports, please, Chief Garrett, you're up.
B on here that you overskipped.
No, B was marked off. Oh, I should've said that for deletions.
Oh, I did not hear that.
Marked off B, deletion. Lisa, you're up, Chief Garrett.
For the month, we had two hundred and eighty-one calls to service. Outside of that, identified the border works. For this meeting, that we did have a resignation by Officer Bestinburg. His official last day will be on the books as September nineteenth.
Sorry, Mike, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, so any questions for Chief Garrett on those numbers, or the officer's resignation? The last day's the nineteenth, so ten days from now, today's the night. There are no questions. Chief Robertson on fire, and he's gonna talk about.
I forgot, I gave you guys the last month's thing, but I don't have it here with me, so. But I do have the up-to-date for the, the whole year. Rescue, fire rescue's three hundred fifty-seven, medic is four hundred ninety-five calls. Total eight hundred fifty-two for the, for the year so far. And last week, we helped with the bonfire for the high school part, that went well. Getting ready for the corn festival coming up next week. And we have a fundraiser coming up, October eighteenth, at the fairgrounds, four to seven. And that's for the, the dyslexia awareness for the kids. JD, you're gonna have to.
Yeah, so it goes in line with the Brewkey and Wine Two Festival. Their proceeds go to dyslexia training for the teachers and for resources for the students that have dyslexia. It's to help and assist that, to where we're doing a fundraiser, Public Safety's kinda doing a fundraiser, and putting fifty percent of that to the same cause, to support dyslexia in the school systems here.
And the fish fries, the Jonathan Fish Fries, so it's, it was, it was real good.
Eighteenth of October, four P M to seven P M, at the Four H Fairgrounds. They've been spittable enough to let us use that facility. And they got the hookups and everything for them, so. Come hungry, on the eighteenth of October, Fish Fry, four to seven P M.
That's all I got.
Any questions for the fire chief? Aaron Nunn, I see Utilities Director Burke Hart is with us tonight. Please let us know what's going on in the DPW world.
Little bit of everything. We're all working together right now, trying to cover everything. Between picking up brush, mowing the park, mowing the sports complex, mowing the lots in town, include the Hamford property.
Since you said it that way, I have to ask, is there a reason why you're all working together now? Are you sure?
We're a little smaller crew nowadays.
We have cut seasonal workers already this year. And we had a couple, and so, yeah, that's, that's some of the cuts that have already taken place for this year. Go ahead.
Said, pretty much everything. We've been picking up brush, yes, you'll see a lot of brush out there. We're giving it a day, day and a half a week right now, and it's, we hauled thirty loads last two weeks, and there's probably that many more out there again.
So we ask everyone to be patient?
Yes. We know they're on the list, and we try, but we can't just drop them, run and grab it. So we're trying to do it at least one day a week. If we can't get there in one week, we kinda try to double up in the next. So we're trying to do it at least one day a week. If we can't get there in one week, we kind of try to double up in the next week. As far as sewer goes, we've been, there's a whole list there that, way marked nicely put together. We did finish the drainage out on East Cheney Street. It is, well, it's not rained since we finished it, but it should work out well. We will get asphalt on that, hopefully still yet this fall before the plant closes. We repaired some storm drains here in town before the corn festival happened, or safety issues along curbs. Got those replaced. These street repairs on West Johnson and West Washington have now been paved, asphalted over. So all the barricades have been removed. They did a rolling curb for us on West Johnson Street to replace what was there. We will pour a new curb on West Washington. It was the issue with, there's a clean out right there where we worked that street cut. So we'll work in a curb there. And normal sewer calls. And we had one new sewer tap that we had to inspect. That was okay, so.
And on top of that, locates every day.
Yes.
You have one person.
There's anywhere from.
Keeps up with locates.
Yep.
And when you drive around the city and see the little colorful flags in the ground.
Flags in the ground, paint on the ground, that's a locate. And there is.
All through the night, emergency locates and everything. Yeah, locates are eight-one-one, call before you dig, of course. That does get generated. We have a guy that.
Yep, it's twenty-four seven. Twenty-four seven.
Any questions for the utility director? Aaron Nunn. Okay, citizens present to address the council tonight. Okay, council comments?
Yeah, one quick question. This might be, on those locates.
Yes, sir.
Is any revenue stream we could have for a locate? Is everything always free on locates? Through, through everyone, okay.
Yeah.
I just, I didn't, I didn't know. I never have to.
Yeah.
Are they being done for Frontier? Why, who's, who's asking for them?
They come in from any contractor within the city. Well, actually, outside the city, we get some also that we don't, I mean, we still.
For utilities there, we have to go.
We have to go out, yeah.
I understand, but isn't there a request for those?
No, it's eight-one-one. Comes from Indiana, eight-one-one. You're not supposed to put anything in the ground without calling eight-one-one, right?
Flower, Bob.
Yes.
I understand that, but why, why aren't they there all year? Why, why did they just appear? Did somebody ask for them?
Yes, yeah.
They're called in daily by whether it's Duke Energy, Frontier, joint, American Water.
Is that Frontier with their?
So the Frontier project that's going on right now, eighty percent is aerial, pole to pole. And then the twenty percent underground, boring and everything, they will call in locates, yes, definitely. Even individual homeowners are to call in eight-one-one locates before they do. And so it'd be a good thing for Tony to bring numbers next month and present them. How many locates he does a month, and even outside of hours compared to daytime. And, and I mean, every utility does it. Telecommunications, the fiber and all that, Valley Gas, Duke Energy, I mean, they, they all.
All I'm saying is, in front of my house.
Got a lot of flags.
First time, yeah.
Yes, those.
Maybe twice in the year.
That was one, one locate that was nine hundred and fifty feet long.
Out by his house?
Yes.
Now, if he called Tony, he could tell you who made the request and what that project.
That is Frontier, yes. They're going, yeah, or no, it's for Frontier. It's actually coming through. They're called Millennium right now.
Sure.
That's a contract company.
So how long do those flags have to stay?
Yeah, two weeks. Whether you mow or not, they need to be put back. If not, we get called back on a second notice, a third notice. And if a third notice happens and we don't make it back, we start paying, what is it, five dollars, ten dollars? But they want to charge us if we don't get the locate correctly done.
Okay, answers exact question.
So you have to leave, have to leave them in.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So it's good for.
Good for fourteen days from the date they are.
The date that they're putting here yard, they need for fourteen days.
They have up to fourteen days to start.
Three days to put them out, right?
Correct.
Seventy-two hours to locate that. Is that business days or?
No, that's.
Three, seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours from the date of call in.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Yes. Two weeks, I guess. What was your question about how much they're charged? That's emergency locates. If we don't call back, we have three times.
Yes.
And then they have five, five, ten, fifteen, some amount.
Yep.
Yep. Any other questions for Tony? Or any other board comments? Hang on. Where are we at? Council comments? To answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
Lisa, I saw these two guys up front here. I call them local heroes, but they saved the guys last one night with critical care. But the fire chief, the police chief, you should have seen that. It was very traumatic, but they, they definitely saved that individual's life. But I know that's real traumatic to watch that and everything, so. They jumped right in, and I was really impressed with that.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they did an amazing job that night.
Yep.
I got one. I'm going to propose, next month is the council meeting to set Halloween hours. But I'm also gonna propose something different. I don't have all the details locked in. I know I shouldn't probably be mentioning it right now. But I'll, I'll lock in some details. I thought it'd happen by tonight, but we'll change a few things, try to. I've got a little group together, a little committee, working out some of these final details. I thought it'd happen today. But just know, next month is Halloween. Halloween's changed, and I think we probably should change with it a little bit, so. That's all I wanted to bring up was.
But Halloween's changed. Most people are dressed up all year.
Wearing costumes all, all year. They're all, so corn festivals next week. Everybody enjoy it. Come out and enjoy the festival and the activities with it. Nobody? Okay. Any motion to adjourn? Hang on. Everybody pause. Hang on. I haven't shut off the live yet. We gotta go back into this.
We are gonna reopen the meeting back up. It's not, nothing closed live. Are we gonna open the meeting back? He's talking to Lisa.
All right, let's reopen this common council regular session for September twenty twenty-five again. And now there'll be new business and it's been passed. And there you have this one, and. Um, is Dean you still in? Oh, yeah, there you are.
I didn't want to get you to say last year, so if somebody looks that up.
Corey's there. We'll wait for President of the Council, Tom, to come back out.
Miscommunication, yeah.
Yo, I've been married forty-three years.
We probably put the session back up here, the common council, September twenty twenty-five. So new business item is gonna be this, and.
You'll have a copy of this, do you?
I do.
So, here, I'll just say something.
There you go.
Yeah. So we are going to introduce a new sewer rate ordinance, and that's what the council should have in front of them now. What this ordinance is, is doing is essentially authorizing additional fifteen percent to the sewer rates. And that's just to help essentially with the cash flow situation the sewer utility is experiencing. I know we've done a couple.
Again, this is a fifteen percent rate increase on the sewer rates in comparison to what's previously been proposed. So this is just essentially the introduction of that. We will have a public hearing on the twenty-third on this matter, but this is just the formal introduction. I know we've had some other rate increases fairly recent. However, the utility is still just experiencing negative cash flows. So this is to address the negative cash balance that we have in the operating fund and to get the appropriate cash flows for the utility in place.
And it's, I mean, this is related to like inflation of pipe, cost of materials. And Tony is not here maybe now, but the utility director, how he spoke on, you know, that, over there on Cheney Street, fixing that stormwater and, you know, the sanitary over there and, and everything tying that in. The cost of pipe is not the same as what it was just five years ago. So it's, it's inflation has an impact on that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, especially the last few years, we've seen significant increases in cost of materials. That's the main driver of this rate increase, is the fact that it just costs more to run the utility now. I can't remember exactly what, what the year was, but I want to say going back even maybe five or six years, we had operating dispersments that were significantly less than what we have now. And again, that's large in part due to the inflation we've experienced. I want to say back maybe in like twenty nineteen even, so pre-COVID really, we were around one point two million dollars in operating dispersments. You know, we're up to one point seven, one point eight now. So that's unfortunately why we are looking at this rate increase. And again, looking to have the public hearing on that in a few weeks.
All right, you've been introduced. Any comments? Anything from the council? Nothing from that end. Any comments?
So I make the comment, it's just another thing that has to be done, and we are being proactive instead of reactive like things have been done in the past.
You guys have been introduced, and now we'll make a motion to adjourn. Anybody?
Me.
Got him. I hope you have a good night. No, no, not tonight, twenty-two.